Uh. So I'm gonna call uh our uh meeting of September thirteenth uh to order. Let's do a roll call.
Sure, Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Tepachnik?
Here.
Ms. Lingalis?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman? Here.
Okay, I have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as you may uh recall, at our last meeting, um, uh, I appointed a nominating committee. And um, as required in the bylaws, uh, both uh Mike, Mike uh and Nick uh were were fine with the members of the committee. Um, today is Richard's uh youngest granddaughter's thirteenth birthday.
Yes.
And he's anxious to join the party and um we we want to uh support him in being with his family. So uh, we're allowing him to move forward with the um report of uh the nominating uh committee uh before we get into our uh other material. Richard?
Yes, uh, the nominating committee met um last Monday night and um we have unanimously uh going to put forward a slate of uh officers for consideration. Um, Louis Schulman as Chair, Nick Cantor as Vice Chair, and Jackie Jordan Byron as Secretary.
Um, have uh has everyone agreed uh to accept the offices if elected?
I believe you have.
Yes, I have.
Honored for the nomination and would would obviously serve if so.
JJ?
Um, I I I will accept. I did not send a letter of intent, but anyone who nominated me, thank you very much. I'll accept.
Good, good. Um. Is there anyone else um interested in um being uh considered for uh any of those uh three positions? Apparently.
Do we want to wait until everyone gets on? May maybe Darius wants to?
Uh, Darius um could not.
Was on the committee.
Yeah, on.
Oh, he was on the committee, okay.
He could not.
Or Hector, I I don't want to, you know, jump over anybody.
Uh, I recommended um uh against uh considering Hector uh because uh Hector is uh running, I think, uh for Board of Education.
Oh.
And and while you never know exactly what's going to happen in an election, uh, it's my understanding that he has a very good chance of being uh uh elected. Uh, should that occur, he'd have to come off the zoning commission.
Right, so in that in that case, I'm happy to accept.
Okay. Um, uh, apparently I'm supposed to ask three times. Is there anyone else who is uh interested in being considered uh for an officer's position uh on the commission? Don't all raise your hands at once. And uh finally, is there anyone who is interested in serving as an officer on the uh commission uh uh effective uh October first? Okay, if not, uh then um let's go to uh the uh election. Um uh you prefer to do it as a single slate or uh individual offices? Richard, your chair?
Yes, may I move to uh elect a slate?
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so uh Richard moved, Tammy seconded, Mike is a backup second. Um.
I know.
Uh, we.
Okay, Galen's trying to speak.
Go ahead, Galen.
No, no, my phone.
My phone.
On mistake.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Uh, let's uh let's do this by uh a roll call.
Certainly, Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Tepachnik?
Yes.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
No, not just kidding, yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I see Darius has joined us. Um, okay, so uh through the uh end of this month, uh, the current officers, uh myself, um, Mike is Vice Chair and uh Nick is Secretary, will continue to serve, but effective uh October first, uh the new officers um uh will will uh uh assume their office. Okay.
Yeah, on that note, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me out early.
Thank you.
Enjoy the party.
Thank you, thank you, Richard, for agreeing to chair. And uh thank you uh both uh Galen and Darius uh for serving on uh the uh committee. Uh, all right, with that, let's go to our discussion, twenty twenty-three dash nineteen R slash M Planning and Zoning Commission Zoning Text Amendment for Complete Rewrite of the Zoning Regulations and MAP Amendment for Complete Rezoning of the entire city, and this is um our uh continuing uh discussion. Uh, it is now six ten. Um, let's uh plan um with just maybe a a bit of wiggle room uh on uh ending this meeting at uh eight P M. Uh, with that, Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Did we lose Steve? Looks frozen. Deep in thought.
Yeah, no, I think, Steve, are you frozen?
Yeah, he looks pretty.
Yeah.
That's how I feel right now.
Brian? Um. All right, Steve just uh went off. He's probably gonna try and get back on.
Steve, can pull up the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, uh, in Steve's absence, uh, can you handle this uh material? Should it come necessary? Now, is? Okay, this is where we left off, but there were still some unresolved items at the last meeting that we probably should start with.
Do we need to spend the most time with the water dependent stuff to start, given the?
I I believe that's gonna be uh an agenda item uh on our agenda next week.
Oh, okay, we're gonna talk.
We're gonna take, we're gonna take formal uh action. Uh, and in order for uh yeah, I'll point it out then too, but in order for it to stand, we will need a uh two-thirds vote.
Okay.
So I believe this was um one of the ones we're gonna come back to. So this is uh for um uh C D four W and five W. I I it looks like Marine Commercial as well. Um, part of it was going to be to, as part of any new developments, they're requiring safe dry access. So essentially that if there's a flood, um uh that the residents there would have to uh have some sort of access plan in order to get out of the flood. Um, and this would be something that uh an applicant would have to provide to the commission um for you to review and approve prior to um approving any projects.
So it uh uh this, for example, would would be part of a um uh special permit um if if the the developer was doing this through a special permit process?
Correct. So as part of like the criteria that they'd submit to you as part of the approval, they would include sort of, I guess it would end up being sort of like an emergency um access plan or egress plan.
What does that look like? What would a pedestrian? Would that look any different? I'm just trying to imagine like.
I can explain uh an example here in the city, if I may.
Please, Mike.
The Soundview Landing, which replaced Washington Village.
Uh huh.
Uh, that was approved under the prior administration, uh, I mean, the prior mayor, I should say, um in two thousand twelve. And uh and that required, you know, that was a um Choice Neighborhoods grant, largest one that it uh uh, or actually, we were the smallest city that had ever received one. I think it was thirty-five million uh from the from HUD. And uh but that required, you know, un- under the HUD requirements, a dry egress was required. Uh because their hundred-year floodplain uh went up uh into the project area and into Ryan Park.
Mm-hmm.
So the solution was to raise that intersection of of the two streets, uh, Day and um Henry, perhaps, I think.
On the backside of the project?
Yeah, on the backside, on the Day Street is the one that runs parallel to water. That street was actually raised a significant amount, like twelve feet.
Oh, wow.
And then the park was actually raised. Uh and I think an equal amount, the the park, the park, well, park was raised maybe eight feet on average, but but there was a walkway put into the park that was above the floodplain level, and that is a, you can't really tell by looking at it, but it was a um a meandering walkway that was wide enough for a vehicle that runs across the park um for emergency access, but also to allow people to uh uh get out of the flood zone if there was one. Uh, so that's that's what that looked like. So now that Ryan Park has been all, it was actually a poorly designed park to begin with. Um, it had a baseball field in it that was too small for any kind of uh regulate, regulation, um. Yeah, I think it was even too small for Little League. Um, but uh nobody ever used it for that, and and uh various other things had fallen apart. There was a uh I I'm probably giving too much information, but uh, you know, there was an amphitheater that was in bad shape. Uh, so the whole park was redesigned. And now it's ju- it's really a remarkable uh public space. You know, with a splash pad and all all new trees, et cetera, but the uh dry egress um had was installed in the park, and you can't really even tell. So that that's you know, that that involved some streets being raised as well as the park being raised. Um, and you, I'm thinking if anybody's been to Ryan Park since it reopened a few years ago, uh, you know, when when Soundview Landing uh was finished, um, you you wouldn't really notice what that's like, but you know, it'd be quite a burden for somebody to do that, let's say, across on Water Street, um. Uh, across from Water Street, let's say, on uh, you know, the waterfront properties. It would require Water Street being raised, um. Uh, I I would imagine, uh, so, I mean, it is quite a burden, and it was really an engineering uh effort, a great effort uh at uh Ryan Park to to do that, so.
Um. Do we think this is too, this is prohibitive? Like, is this gonna just kill any sort of development in the water?
So this, this is not meant to say they have to do that on the street. This is meant to say they have to handle that on their site to get them out of the street. The city's gonna need to figure out what they want to do with Water Street long term in terms of um they just let it flood, or is it, are they gonna think about raising it? That's a bigger discussion for another night, but this is this is on their site. They need to provide access off of their site onto a back onto the city street. We can't, I don't think we can require any of these individual developments to fix all of Water Street.
No, that makes sense.
But 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 as a prerequisite, couldn't we write in that the city must repair or replace or you know, develop a a pumping station, so this way in the event of flooding, you know, it's kind of like, you know, in in this way, the the horse is already out of the the barn. And, you know, as a prerequisite preventative, you know, shouldn't this infrastructure already exist? To prevent, I mean, I mean, in- instead of demanding that the developer, you know, puts in place all of these stopgaps, shouldn't the city already have something, you know, in the event of flooding to begin with?
Yeah, so I I mean, what the city does on Water Street would be independent of the zoning in terms of, that's a really major infrastructure project, what happens long term in that area. I think what what the regulations are addressing is what they have to do on their individual sites.
Uh, I think it's, I think it's legally required. Isn't it, there's flood insurance issues? And uh public safety issues. I I I don't think they would get their financing without it. I I think this is.
What's what's always out in the airwaves is the fact that this is a flood zone and.
Yeah, that's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, and and so if 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 it's common knowledge it's a flood zone, what is the city doing to abate it?
It's Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be just like any other person wanting to renovate a home, whether it's a commercial building or a residential building. If you're in the flood zone and you want to renovate or build new, you have to build to the new FEMA standards. You can ask, should we develop or redevelop in this area at all? That's a whole other question. You know.
Yeah, it it this would go a little bit beyond that, so any any structure obviously would have to be flood compliant and com- and comply with the pretty stringent set of standards. This is also looking at the site a little bit more as well and saying you have to have on your site, you have to have the ability to safely, you know, pedestrian only, safely exit the site in from dry means of access onto the city road with the understanding, again, the city's gonna have to do something with Water Street long term, or maybe they don't, but this site has to make sure the site itself gets people out to a safe juncture.
And just for pedestrians, but if a building, if a new building is built to a FEMA standard, then perhaps, let's just say it's a hurricane rather than just a flooding event where there's not, you know, gale force winds or extreme water, wouldn't a person be better off staying in place if their building is elevated?
Uh, I don't know if I want to say that. I think the idea would be that the 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 way I would look at it is that, you know, if there is a hurricane or significant flood, that that building will withstand whatever the storm is or whatever the event is, but doesn't necessarily mean that people should stay there, should, you know, they may be better off going, you know, because they could still be technically cut off for a period of time inside of their structure if the surrounding area was underwater. So I think the idea is to get them to an area we know is gonna be out of the waters, floodwaters, and but the building will still be there when they get back.
And what about the evacuation routes? You know, there are, I believe those are estate mandated. You see them in coastal areas. I think there's one on one thirty-six over um Martin Luther King Wilson Avenue. Isn't that a?
We're we're getting, we're getting way, we're getting way off uh the topic here, and if we want to make progress, we really have to stick to what what is in front of us here.
Okay, sorry.
That, it's okay.
Trying to understand, like, the impact this would have. Because if everybody, let's just say this was single, it's not a single family, it's multi-family zoning, it will be apartment-type buildings, so it would be incumbent upon the developer to make some type of exit where people can get out of the building on high ground to get to higher, you know, safety. And who knows where that is? I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I just think.
S- Steve, um, what does the one percent annual chance uh flood event um uh a- actually end up being? Is that a hundred year flood?
Yeah.
Uh. Uh, what does it represent?
I believe so, yes.
Um, well, shouldn't we say that? Um, uh, uh, otherwise, you know, someone uh can argue, well, you know, we get a ten-year flood every e- e- every year. We don't get a hundred-year flood every year. That's why it's a hundred-year flood. You get it every hundred years. We know that not to be so, but I don't think we want to get into an argument with a developer over that issue. Um, so I would prefer us uh using a a a term that everyone understands rather than um one that may need to be interpreted.
Let, let's uh, well, let me, we just table that one piece of the sentence for now, and we'll go back and look at the the FEMA guidance. Just, I think we want to make sure we're more lined up with what terminology that they typically use, so we can clarify that piece.
I would think the developers would want to do this. I mean, they don't want to be liable because we all know that it floods constantly. My son-in-law's building his businesses on this water side of uh Water Street, and it's built way up on stilts, and it floods constantly underneath.
Mike, Mike is, Mike is right. A developer is not going to get fu- uh funding um un- unless they uh uh
Oh, this, yeah.
address, address an issue like this.
Right.
I it I have no problem whatsoever with what's um what this is about. It's just a question of of having language um that everybody can agree on.
I have no problem with this, and I'm fine with the language. I am concerned about coming back to the letter from Harbor Management and making sure that we understand the change that's being proposed in four W, five W, and that whole issue, and I want to make sure we get to that.
Well, that 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 uh is uh, as I said, is going to be an agenda item on next week's agenda. So there should be ample opportunity to discuss it.
The, and I want to clarify something as well, because it does mention, um well, actually, it's it looks like the uh text has been reduced on what we're viewing right here, but if you could click on that, uh, Steve, yeah, pull that up. Uh, the last sentence, uh, multi-family development within with ten or more units proposed within a flood hazard overlay zone must provide a written evacuation plan. The flood hazard overlay zone is the hundred-year floodplain, so that kind of covers what your concern was, uh, Lou, I I think. Uh, but the uh written evacuation plan, I'll just uh tell you that I was around in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, when Soundview Landing was approved. And the evacuation plan there was uh was written, and it involved uh notifying all uh of the residents who owned a car to move their car. They were required to move their car to the uh garage at the uh Sono train station, which was gonna make the uh part of the plan was, they were gonna make that garage available so that everybody got their car out of the flood zone. Uh, and uh, and then there were other um parts of that evacuation plan, but I just wanted you to know that the written evacuation plan already exists at least for that project and perhaps for others. Uh, oh, they had one for um I believe there was one for uh One Cemetery Street as well, the written evacuation plan, and they had dry egress uh as well, if you recall from that application. Um they uh, you know, was at the front of the building, so um uh, anyway, I just wanted to make sure people knew what these uh terms meant, and that we've dealt, we've dealt with that previously.
There's more um tucked in there that the the uh line doesn't show up clearly, but uh number fourteen, um there's a clause in the existing regulations, and this kind of popped up a little bit with the, we were able to work around it a little bit with uh the project you just approved on Maple Street or at the former Y site, where we just want to clarify that sometimes the the um setback can be measured from the public improvement, so that gives a little bit of a little bit more cushion for the applicant in terms of what they do within the streetscape. It's consistent with the existing language. Yeah, fourteen, Brian, if you can just leave it there.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I uh wanna freeze this so that we can see that. If I remember how.
Home.
Of course, my Zoom bar is like blocking what I can see, but okay.
Go to home. And then where, now where's the freeze point? Is it home or view? I think it's view. You're probably right.
There we go.
There it is.
Uh, let me delete this there. Yeah, okay, sorry.
All right. And then the other ones are very, the same exact text we just talked about. One, which is number fourteen and number seventeen.
All right, uh, Steve, you'll be uh giving us some uh proposed uh language on that uh one percent issue?
Yeah, we'll we'll sort, we'll we'll just look at that again and clean it up, and I'll just revise the sentence, and I'll send, I'll probably just send that out as an email at some point in time.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, next one is number twenty-four. Um, one thing we did more of it is just a small design issue. Um, and this came up a lot of when we were talking about the upzoning from the one to the two family. Um, and and some questions came up during public comment as well as raised by the commission, making sure if you're allowing duplexes, we just don't want um a box, so by, one thing is to uh modify e- either A, the little diagram that's within the regulations, or simply put it into text, um that the they're required to put in some kind of cover porch or covered entry um as an interesting architectural feature as part of the building, so it's not just a box. You know, some people don't do that already. Some people, you know, want to design something to a higher standard, so I think this is more protective measure to make sure we get a little better outcome at the end of the day. Um, next one, or actually the next two, we can take them separately or take them together. Uh, there's been some questions raised about Airbnb and bed and breakfast in the residential zones. Um, the current draft had them allowed as a right. Um the the, so staff is kind of agnostic. Oh, I'll take them separately for for bed and breakfast. I, you know, either you can remove them as a use, or I would say if you're interested in keeping them in there, having them in as a special permit, that the memo that we put together had some uh criteria you could consider applying to those to that use if you felt it was appropriate. So I would say as a um, you know, course of action, either A, decide on, you know, first step, decide that you would like to see that use within the zones, or if you do not, then that takes care of the second part, which would be um allowing it by special permit with uh various conditions.
Steve, my concern with um making it a special permit for an Airbnb is.
Sorry, Tammy, I was just talking about uh bed and breakfast first.
Oh, just bed and breakfast. Okay, sorry.
I want to say that that um I appreciate your team looking into this. I'd be a proponent of allowing bed and breakfast by special permit in specific zones. I don't think we've discussed or the memo addressed sort of which zones they should be allowed in, but just that there should be a way to have a bed and breakfast with the requirements that come with that through special permit, and I would support that. And again, that's completely separate from Airbnb and not necessarily in all zones and with all, and and I liked the draft you guys put together, but but obviously with um looking at that in a little more detail, um, I I like that idea.
Yeah, I would think you'd look at it in the single-family zones and the maybe the two-family zone, which probably makes the most sense. Because then you're into zones that allow for um in more intensive accommodation uses versus the single-family zone, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure about that. I didn't see in the staff comparison of local areas that they looked at what zones things are allowed in. I know that there's been some public comment to specifically not have it in single-family zones. I mean, I feel like that's a separate conversation, but I'd be curious whether other commission members, how they feel about just the idea to have it allowed, but through a special permit with specific regulations, period. I don't know if I'm the only one.
No, I'm I'm with you on that as well. Uh, yeah, because a bed and breakfast could be a could be a positive thing to have, you know, if you have a big Victorian house like I have, although. Thing to have, you know, if you have a big Victorian house like I have, although I'm not interested. In having a bed and breakfast, I can tell you that um. I really don't make, like to make breakfast for anybody and uh, I don't like having overnight guests. Uh, to be honest, but um. Uh. There are. Yeah, a special permit would protect neighborhoods, make sure that all the parking issues. Noise, et cetera, uh, screening. Uh, you know, we're, we're controlled. It wouldn't just be as a right. Uh, I, I, I agree with you, um, Anna.
I'm fine with the two. I mean, I think Norwalk has some nice areas that. You know, we're not Cape May where every house is turned into a, a bed and breakfast, but there might be some opportunity for people. And I wouldn't restrict it to any particular neighborhood. I don't think it's going to be a watershed thing.
It's, it's a hard business to run. Honestly, I know people that have done it and then. Decided that it was too much work.
Yeah.
You know, it, it really is intensive. Uh, you're, you're there. All the time, you know, unless you can uh, delegate it out to employees or something, but. The idea is that it's, you know. Uh, it's supposed to be in a home with an owner occupier, I believe.
Okay, I'd um, I'd like to hear from some of the other commissioners um.
I was in agreement.
Okay, thank you, JJ.
Yeah, I'm in agreement too.
Alright, uh, Steve, um, let's have the staff uh, prepare. Uh, uh, special permit language uh, for that that we can review.
Yeah, I, I think that was in the memo. I would, I'll point you back to that. That's another um. Again, I would think, you know, for those kind of things where, where you're kind of. Whether you're just working through some of those small details. Um, I would say we can hit those at any point in time before the regulations are voted on, whether, you know, we, I don't know, want to. Bog down too many meetings going over language. So if you have.
Right.
Specific, I'll send that back out again, but if you have specific items you think should get tweaked, we can. You know, we can go through those at any point in time.
Okay.
And I know George is in the meeting with his hand up. I know this isn't a hearing. Whether that would be appropriate.
We shouldn't do that just because if we, it's not fair to anybody else that we, since we didn't notice it as a public hearing. Um. Then every other, anybody else that wanted to show up and wasn't given the opportunity to speak, it's not fair to those folks. Okay, um. And the other one was Airbnbs and. Um, I think if it, you know, if the city feels that that is a, a problem or something that needs to get addressed, it. Probably better handled, my opinion, through an ordinance versus through zoning um. The way we kind, and I think we laid it out in the memo, the way we kind of handle that now is um. You know, i- it's a dwelling is a dwelling, so long as they're using it um. In accordance with what's permitted by the definition of what a family is, then that's not a problem. Where it seems to become a problem is when they use it for other purposes, when they use it for um. You know, social gathering spaces where they might have a family reunion or some kind of more quasi-commercial function. That's when they typically become problems. Um, you know. Most of the time they're not an issue. I think sometimes, you know, they, you might. Typically even like with a rental property that's solely rental property. Usually an issue arises when. The particular tenant is not um, you know. Very cognizant of their surroundings or not a good neighbor at that point in time, but. That's just kind of the staff position on, on Airbnbs as a whole. I, I mean personally, I have not. We've probably gotten three or four complaints in the last few years on those as a whole, which is really not much of anything. So I, I mean, I don't know. I think from what I've seen about Airbnb regulations in other communities, you could spend. Six months going over um, what to do about Airbnb. So my recommendation is to. If it's a big concern, seek the, seek the ordinance route versus the zoning regulation route.
I have a question. If we were to do the bed and breakfast special permit, whatever. And then there were folks. Doing Airbnb in a way that causes problems. Could that then be addressed as a violation in that like you are. Basically operating. A bed and breakfast that's out of compliance. To get them to stop.
So somebody. Go ahead, sorry, I've cut you off.
If, if, if whatever they were doing, if, if they've got the house, you know. Renting ten rooms for one or two nights at a time with parking problems and this problems and that problems. Uh, could enforcement therefore be addressed as a violation of the bed and breakfast rules?
I would think, and I think the key thing would be the, so the bed and breakfast. Is going to be an owner occupied facility where they're renting a certain number of rooms out and providing a meal. And sleeping quarters and, you know, bath accommodations or, you know, those kind of things. And that would be spelled out. And you, you know, keep in mind with a special permit, you have the ability to apply. Um, additional conditions beyond what is within the regulations. If you, and, and that's put in there specifically to deal with. Properties that are different from one another. Not every, not every potential bed and breakfast is going to be on a. A one acre lot that's a perfect rectangle with just two or three neighbors around it. You might have a property that could. Seek a special permit that's got six or seven neighbors and has wetlands and is very narrow and who knows what could be the circumstances. You have the ability to put on additional criteria about screening or other rules that you feel are appropriate. And consistent with what the regulations allow. If somebody is operating an Airbnb, for example, and they're renting it out. Um, and I've been through this scenario before where they're renting it out to use the building for commercial shoots. Because it's got great views or a great backyard and they've got camera crews there and different things. That's a clear violation of the zoning regulations as they exist. So that would be an enforcement action. Or the other scenario you kind of touched on. If they're renting out ten rooms and our regulations allow a maximum of three unrelated people, then that would be a violation as well. And that would. Be, you know, an enforcement mechanism we currently have in effect to handle that.
I'm not sure if I heard an answer to the question. If, if we had rules for true bed and breakfasts. Would that possibly help with enforcement? Of sort of runaway. Airbnbs if they came up to have. That as well, because you're talking about enforcing commercial. Right? I'm just wondering if this would help.
Only, no, I don't think so because if.
Okay.
A bed and breakfast is going to be a special permit use and it's going to be specific to that. If they're not operating an illegal. If they were operating an illegal bed and breakfast, then yes, but it wouldn't.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, but.
I think they're two different things. That's why they're broken.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Steve, let's uh, move on.
Um. The next one was an item that the commission brought up, that's something they would like to. Um, talk about potentially allowing in some of the. Single family zones, which is the kind of what I'm just kind of calling corner stores um. And we put a memo together with a bunch of, you know. Kind of the same scenario with the bed and breakfast. Question one, do you think that's something? You think might be a good idea allowing in the residential zones? And if you do, then oh, you know, you have to consider like a. Bunch of conditions and parameters to put around that. So that, that's what the memo kind of gives you a kind of a two-step process. A, good idea. If not, then it's, you know, it's not under consideration. If you do think it's a good idea, then it's really looking at um. The condition and, and parameters under which you think it should occur.
Uh, Steve, uh, do we have uh, any good examples in town?
Oh yeah, we do.
Yeah, there's some of the single families.
Several in Norwalk I can think of off the top of my head.
The Silver Mine Market is one, uh, no JD's Deli, uh, near Grand View. And I think there's some in Pro 8 as well.
Jordan's Pizza on, on the corner of Flex Hill and Soundview, the one on, what's it called? Sunset Hill Road. Um, and the little.
Newtown Ave.
Newtown and, yeah, there are quite a few.
And those are all single family uh, neighborhoods?
Many of them are for sure.
Yeah.
The pizza place on Flex Hill, I think is multi, but.
I know uh, JD's near Grand View, that's uh. As you go further down the hill, that's near Magnolia, which was a part of our. For me. But uh, further up the hill. And, and um, no Shroom, which also came up, is dancing.
There's a little grocery sort of on Grund.
Yeah.
And everyone in the neighborhood loves it.
Yeah. Encourage walkability, but we shouldn't discourage these corner stores.
Super in favor of this.
That I, I'm in, I'm in support of that too. I mean, we told, at the last meeting in regards to. Um. You know, how, how, how this will play out for um. You know, the upzoning for some of the neighborhoods and I was saying that it will encourage businesses to move in to support the new people. You know, Dry Clean is an ice cream shop, you know, a, a, a corner store, a pizza shop. So this is exactly what I was talking about.
It could also help reduce traffic in many of our main arteries. Pick up a few things that they need.
People will be walking to get it, exactly.
Or just driving, but like just less cars on the main road.
And we should definitely think with this, what parking requirements, if any, we want to actually have, you know. We want to encourage it to be more, you know, put more, in more places, less parking requirements. Just something to consider.
Well, the other thing, you know, the one I most. Frequently go by is the one on Newtown Ave and that can be a little hairy in the mornings because you have a lot of um. Contractor vehicles and landscape vehicles that go there. They come for like a. Quick sandwich and a coffee or whatever, and then they, you know, pull on in the road. They're kind of parked half in the road. So. Just keep that in mind and I don't, I think what you would probably hear through the special permit process is concern about. Overflow parking onto the street. So that would be something just to, to keep in mind. And again.
Suggesting that uh, these be permitted uh, only by special permit?
I, I think you're much better off doing it that way, just because I think. You know, how many of these actually pop up? Who knows um, what the economics are for something like that, but I think. Especially if it's a new concept, it's always easier to. Pull it back later on and say, alright, it hasn't been a problem. You can allow it by site plan or allow it as a right, but. I think the neighborhood would, would probably appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on that. And it gives you the ability. To apply uh, different criteria and look at each site a little more individually.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I agree.
Agree with that as well.
Okay, are we all in agreement on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on.
This was a memo we sent out, I think, end of last week, which I think was just a kind of a gross oversight on my part. Um. We uh, you know, right now that we, we, for some reason, when we looked at the CD four W and the CD five W, we didn't. Allow the actual water dependent uses, which we should have included in that. That are the ones that are currently. Within the marine commercial zone. So staff would recommend allowing those within those two zones. Just makes sense. Most of those uses are already allowed anyway, so it's not like we're introducing new things into those zones. I did put um, in the memo caveat, if there were. A couple of uses that maybe would be considered a little more intensive, that maybe you would. Put those in, in, in the four W or even in the five W as a special permit use, but otherwise I think they're all. Consistent with what could, could have happened today and just makes it more um, consistent throughout.
And that, uh, that alleviates the, some of the concerns. Pressed in the letters from the Harbor Commission. Correct?
It dresses some of it, not, not the part of it, not wholly, but I think some of it.
Yes, uh, I'd agree with this.
Does, Steve, does that? Exclude. Residential. I, I mean, I know when we had the industrial zone study, we talked about Water Street in particular. And some of the buildings down by like Rex Marine and putting. Retail on the bottom and residential on the top. Is that? Does that apply here?
It, it would not exclude the residential. No, these would be. The, the, these water dependent uses would be in addition to what's already listed as allowed or not allowed in the zone.
Okay. I, I'm in favor of really keeping the water dependent uses by the water. Um, however, we can do that. And I think the Harbor Commission would approve of that as well. Not so much residential.
Uh. Does any, anyone have an objection to this?
No.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody saying yes, so let's, let's keep going.
Um, the next one was just a, which was on line fifty-six, or she sort of fifty-seven, fifty-six. Um, about, uh, so with the combining of the neighborhood business and the CD four, the um. The concern would be within the CD four um, about the automotive uses, which we think could be a problem in some of those residential zones. So we. Not thinking that was a good idea. Just wanted to get clarification on that. Um. The next one down is line sixty-one. Uh, boutique manufacturing. Um, and this was a recommendation that was made about consider allowing that in the CD four W. And the five double, five W um. Which I think you could probably argue, you're, maybe you're even splitting hairs with the existing terminology of. Like boutique manufacturing, if you had like a, somebody doing small boat repair, small boat building, it's sort of like in that same vein anyway. Um, staff doesn't have any uh, objection to including that as well.
That's not going to allow someone to. Do the inverse of doing something semi-water adjacent and use it. Well, no, I guess we're saying, we're saying compatible with water dependent uses. Does it, are we saying it has to be? It's just compatible with not requiring with water dependent. Nevermind, I'm sorry, I'll shut up, makes sense.
Okay, can we move on to the next?
Um, and I don't, I, I apologize. I don't recall what number twelve is, but I think number twelve either conflicts with existing text. Or is redundant text. So just more of a clarification than anything else.
Alright, will you double check? We'll trust you to double check that.
Yeah, and uh, either Brian and I'll pull it up before the end of the meeting and.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was conflicting language. So removing. Item twelve, I think would. Match up the ADU language with what we permit today.
Yeah, I, I think it had to do with the size of the unit. It, it kind of. One section it says you can do this and one section it says you can't do this. So it kind of, I think that just cleans that piece up.
Steve, further up, before we keep scrolling, did we already hit the more intense usage items? They weren't highlighted. Did that mean we, we covered them and we've come to resolution on those?
Um.
Like the concrete one, there was a few of them there that looked like there were still open questions. Uh, keep going up. I, I rock crushions also, but there we go, the. Concrete plants, natural gas storage. All or an oil petroleum, those three.
Yeah, I thought those were rectified from my recollection of things.
And where, where, where did we land? We landed on allowing with special permit?
Allowing by special permit within the heavy industrial zone only.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, cool.
So this is kind of where we left off, which would be starting on line eighty-four. Um. Brian, can you, is it possible to expand that? Is like, just need to, to the right. I can't quite see the whole.
Let me know what you can't see, because I have everybody's faces and. Went to the top or the bottom and blocked them.
Can't see the uh, far right of column D.
Alright.
If you make. Yeah, or you can shrink column C, just let it wrap.
Yeah, thi- this is one of the uh, yeah, there we go. This is one of the problems with Zoom is that you can't. See the controls, the people and the table at the same time.
That's why you gotta have three monitors.
Exactly, that's why we have.
I have three, my husband has seven.
Well, the only downside to that is that we can't see column A now. And so that's, makes it without seeing the page number for the public. That's the, like the, the negative.
Yeah, let me try to see if this will work.
That works pretty good. So as long as all the text. Fits into D, then that's good.
Yeah, if you make column A smaller. That might give you a little.
There you go. That's, that works.
Okay.
Good job, Brian.
Okay, so the first one had to do with um. Drive-through facilities, um. Okay, so the first one had to do with, um, drive-through facilities, um. The question is, are they a good idea, bad idea, um, to allow them? I think. The only zone that really makes sense is to allow them on, um. Which is the C D four C, which is, you know, basically route one and main Ave. Otherwise, it's probably just inappropriate to allow them in other places. Um, didn't want to know what people's thoughts were on that.
Well, when we, you, I don't, I, I agree that they're not desirable. And certainly in a more pedestrian friendly environment, it's just another curb cut with cars coming in and out. But when we recently approved the drive-through cannabis retail, the recreational cannabis. Uh, outlet or facility, whatever, um, on, um, Connecticut Avenue. Uh, it didn't come up in discussion, but I, in the back of my mind, I was thinking for someone who is disabled. But is able to drive a car, which is, is quite common. Um, that would be beneficial than forcing someone to have to get out of a car. And, you know, get, get to, uh, i- inside of a building. Uh, and the same thing with, uh, places like C V S, drive-through pharmacy. Uh. I know, I know some, uh, elderly folks. With limited mobility who really appreciate the drive-through at the C V S. On, um. On Connecticut Avenue and Scribner, they use that and they use the drive-through at Walgreens. On West Avenue, just to name two examples. There's other, there's other drive-throughs, but.
No, Mike, this would still allow that, right? Because if we allow it in C D four C, all those locations are. Um. Where on, on Post Road, which is for, for C and Main Ave.
Well, I'm, I'm addressing the first sentence. Should we consider make all drive-through facilities N P? So I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with staff's recommendation here. Um. And, uh, o- only because I, I believe it is a issue of accessibility. For a lot of people of limited mobility.
Should we clarify in C D four C that we are in favor of it through special permit for. Pharmacies or that sort of related stuff versus, um. Fast food or those things, or is that splitting hairs?
I think that's splitting hairs and I think that, that. I don't. So like on East Avenue, we have a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts. It causes traffic problems. I think they put it on the wrong side of the street, honestly. But it gets a lot of use. The Rite Aid could theoretically have a drive-through and would make it much easier for people who have accessibility issues. And families don't want to get out of the car. I don't, I just don't know that limiting it to four C.
Oh, I would say I totally agree leaving it for four C, like putting it down on East Ave was like, it's a disaster. Like that's just such.
Yes, it's a disaster, but there are like. To drive through and get.
Anytime you put any, I, I don't know. I, I wouldn't, we put it, we took it out of the E V T Z on purpose for that.
Okay.
I wouldn't put it back other than the arteries, because you literally shut down the road with the drive-through there, especially people are gonna come, go the wrong way. It says, don't make a left, but everyone knows people make left out of there all the time. Just.
Yeah. If it, uh, if it was removed intentionally. Fine. Maybe you, I, I think everybody knows how horrible East Avenue is and. I agree. And maybe those were some really bad decisions for drive-throughs, but. Rather than saying yes or no to only certain type of roads, maybe you make it on a case-by-case basis, or is that too much work for planning and zoning? Like a special permit type of thing for drive-throughs.
Yeah. So, so if they were by special permit, you have discretion to say no, if you feel there's evidence in the record to support that, no. So if you, you know, if you had like, uh, report, traffic study or a referral from a department said, because of the, the, the. Intersection that this impacts and the narrowness of the. Width of the lot or the, you know, curvature of the road, a drive-through at this location is inappropriate. Then you could say no. So you have that discretion.
Yeah, I think, and, and somewhat like, especially in the C D four, I mean, a lot of those lots are, you know, fifty feet wide. And so say Dunkin' Donuts says, oh, I want to go in and, you know, on Van Zant Street on a fifty foot wide lot. It's going to be a disaster, whereas on Route one and, and Main Ave, you have a lot bigger properties who can kind of cue the traffic a lot better than. You know, your fifty foot wide commercial lot.
Right. But what about streets like Broad River? I, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not like. For or against per se, but I think if we put it as a case-by-case basis for drive-throughs, that would give us. Sort of the local knowledge of whether it should be approved or not, rather than just it's here, but it's not there.
Yes, I agree with that.
And under the special permit rules, we get to decide which evidence we believe, right? Is my understanding of the law behind it, even if a traffic study said this is fine. We weigh the evidence and the different people talking about that. So it's not like. Your hands are totally tied.
Yeah.
Um, and did you want me to go through each one of these? I know there's, there's certain ones in here that are a little more, um. Little more discussion oriented and a little more meaty in terms of the content. Some of these are. Um, pretty basic. I don't know if you want to go through each one. I don't want to waste time on a line by line if you don't want to do that.
I don't, uh, see the need to go through these on a line-by-line basis, especially if they're minor in nature.
The, the next two I would say are on page two fifty nine, then I would think, um. That might warrant a little bit of discussion. Um, first one has to do with the, uh, and I can't recall who raised this question about the, um. About the solar on, on the, um, for the E V charging stations, um. I don't, I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another on, on that. I, I just don't know if it actually works or the benefits. So that was the only question I had about. Requiring it versus, I, I don't care. It's not a bad idea. It's just, does it actually do what's intended?
Uh, Steve, I, I'm not sure I understand what motor vehicle sales.
So this is like gas, I think gas stations essentially is saying that if you're constructing a gas station, you also have to put in an E V charger. And then put solar on top of, but again, I don't know if that's with all the fire. Code that goes into constructing a ga- a gas station. I don't know if they let you, but.
There are the ones on, uh, uh, off ninety five on the.
No, that's right. Yep. Yeah.
But con- considering, uh, the size of many of our gas stations, the size of. Traffic. Do we think it'd be worth, you know, mandating E V charging stations? Gas station.
Every square inch counts in my view, so. I'd leave it in unless there's, unless there's, unless staff can say there's no benefit to it.
Uh, Steve, uh, I, I'm still concerned about the language you're using there. It says motor vehicle sales. I mean, it sounds like a car dealership or a secondhand car dealership. Um, and it's, but it seems what we're talking about is fuel sales. Um. I mean, I have no problem with, with these requirements for a gas station, um, or another fueling station. Um, motor vehicles, uh, sales are something completely different.
It would be sort of self-selecting if, if a, if a. Car dealership is selling electric cars, obviously they have an electric charging station. But a gas station might not want to have one because they'd rather sell gas. I don't know.
Yeah, I think you just have to check the definite. I know in the existing regulations, I think motor vehicle sales and, uh, gas stations are lumped as one use. So anywhere in a zone where you allow a gas station, you also de facto allow motor vehicle sales. Maybe we just. Carried that forward. So maybe these definitions or uses should just get broken up into separate, uh, uses.
Brian, why don't you just highlight that one and we'll, um, come back to it.
Yeah. And, and, and when you're talking about motor vehicle sales, I, I, I think you're talking about a good deal more square footage. Uh, than you are for, uh, fuel sales, so.
Some of the licensing with the state for motor vehicles, they lump in, um, used car sales and repair. So that could be some of that is.
Okay.
Station. So we'll, we'll clean that up.
Okay.
Um, the next one is the, and this is the, there's probably. Four of these uses that got lumped together. Um, you'll see the same language repeated. Um, there was a question about, wi- wi- with the combination of the existing D residence zone with the neighborhood business zone. What would be the impacts by allowing commercial uses on some of those new areas going into the, um, C D four zone? And that was a good point that was raised. So that's why, um. Staff had made the recommendations for the C D four and the C D four W to address. That proliferation of those kind of uses and kind of control where they can go and how big they can be and, you know. Triggering the criteria for special permit versus site plan. So I don't know if anybody had questions about that language, but that applies to medical office, office. Personal service, retail and restaurants. So it's the same, same text for all those uses.
Anybody have an issue with that?
No, I think that's better than allowing it anywhere on the, on the block. You know. Whether by special permit or, or by, as a right.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Uh, next sixty four is the restaurant. So we got in retail is the next one.
Uh, can we go up to religious institutions? Um. I, I just want to say that I, um. Uh, agree that that issue ought to be addressed. Um, that is considering a greater setback and a lot area for religious institutions.
All right, you may be running into a reloop of. Issue there. If you're gonna have a different standard for a religious institution than you would for. Any other allowed use.
Yeah, can you just, for those newer, what's the reason behind that?
Uh, there, and it's not specific to one. Project, but it does come up a lot that if there's a, and it's not also just restricted to religious institutions. You can apply this standard to. Other special permit uses in residential zones is. If they're going to go into a residential neighborhood, the lot standard should be. Um, and we do this with schools too. So we already require actually more significant for like even public schools. That was an issue up on, um, Cranberry. Which made the city have to go and get a variance for the project, but the. The idea being if you're gonna put like in the churches, what we're talking about, you're gonna put some kind of religious institution. In a, a typical one acre zone, the lot should be larger and the setback should be bigger. So the impacts are lessened on the surrounding area.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I don't believe that to be discriminatory.
We, we can definitely, um. Pose that question to corporation counsel to get, um, confirmation. That's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do that.
I don't love this, but.
Go ahead. I, I didn't mean to, uh, talk over you.
Oh, no, no, no. That's all. I was just saying, I don't love, I don't love this requirement per se.
Well, I, I remember, yeah, years ago, the, um. After the mosque, uh. Appeal and the, remember it was a federal, it was a federal, uh, appeal to the Department of Justice. And the city lost, um. And, uh, the, uh. I, I remember looking at Stanford's requirement for religious institutions and it was, uh. De- definitely, uh, stricter than Norwalks. Um, and this is going back a decade ago. So, uh. You know, if we, if we just look at other nearby cities like Stanford. They've already, uh, not sure if it was a large, it was a larger lot requirement. Uh, than for a residential use and, uh. Uh, I, I don't know the details, but I, I remember if that passed muster. At that time, uh, then it, you know, it's obviously. It may have been challenged, but I think that, uh, that, that this would fit into that. But you certainly can't. Uh. You, you can't single out religious institutions separately. You have to deal with all of this uses. Is that, isn't that correct, uh? Steve?
Yeah, you, you can't. Yeah, right. That, that, and that's kind of common lane use practice in general, but yeah, more so for religious institutions.
Steve, does it also have to do with parking requirements in any way?
No, because the, they have a separate standard, um, and I think the new regulation has a. A higher parking count than the current regulations has. Because I think what, I think basically that existing regulation is like one space for every four seats. And I think that, you know, is basically based on a model of. Mom, dad and two kids going to church. So that, that's where that came from. And I, I think the. Way that people practice now is different. So I think the standard requires a little more parking than the current one.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and just to verify on number one oh four, uh, shared parking. There was somebody had raised a concern about the, how that's calculated. Brian spent some time going through that and it seems to. Make perfect sense. So we would recommend no change on that one.
I think that's great. The shared parking concept. Um, towards work.
Okay, let's keep going.
And it's a lot of parking kind of things here.
We're just gonna remove it all, right? There's control delete.
Uh, let's just stop on the highlighted one, one ten, Brian.
One lapse.
This one is a tricky one, um. And I, it's very, you know, it's, it's oftentimes easy to go. To other sources and find, you know, what community X is doing, community Y is doing. With these commercial rec facilities, it's very tricky. Um, because you get the, you know, the facility down on, uh, Martin Luther King Boulevard. That was, you know, the, the use within the building is the recreational type use has changed over time. And when you do that, you, you know, whether, whether it's some kind of league play or it's, um, clinics or it's kids leagues. You, you, you get like a singular, pretty massive influx of cars at one time with a lot of drop off. Um, not always the parking, but sometimes you do get the parking at the same time. And then there's the, um. The overlap between like, you know, this, this group's got the field from ten to eleven and the next group's from eleven to twelve. But these guys don't leave the facility. So it's really can be problematic, um. We've kind of left the, the language that exists now. I'm not thrilled with it. Um, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or recommendations. I'm happy to. Re- further research, but I wanted to highlight that one because it's a little bit confusing and concerning.
So I, I have a question on the adult daycare facility. The one that's two, yeah. So I see staff recommends one per employee. And assuming that none of the clients are likely driving themselves, but what about those who are visiting or those who. Are assisting? Shouldn't there be enough parking spaces for overflow or enough, you know? People who are coming into the center?
I'm sorry, J J, I missed the last part of what you said.
Okay, um, required parking based on square footage. And I see it doesn't make sense that as the clients are not likely driving their selves. Okay, I understand that part. But you're recommending only one per employee. All right, this is a, this is a daycare center, not, you know, a residential center. So I'm thinking that, you know, more likely that, you know, other people will be coming out of the facility. You know, vendors, not, not just people who work there as nursing staff, but how about cooking staff, planning staff?
AJ, we did one of these, there's the reason why we recommended one is we permitted one a few months ago at twenty-five Van Zant Street. And kind of what their business model was is the seniors go there. So they all would get dropped off or they would get picked up and brought there. And they'd have some sort of activity planned for them, or then they would from there, they'd use it as a gathering point and then bring them elsewhere.
Right.
I don't know if folks would be visiting them onsite, it was more of just like a, they have programs ready for them so that the, the staff would. It's really like the only ones using the, the parking.
Well, I'm, I'm familiar with, you know, an adult daycare center and they do more than just activities, they, they, you know. There's food there, there's story time, there's all kinds of activities where other people, vendors come into. The center, not just those who are transporting.
So how about one point three per employee?
Oh, Nick is, Nick is.
Sorry, I was saying, just be careful there, remember last week when you were talking about. Affordable housing for folks and Adam was saying. And you're gonna hear this from a lot of people, it's expensive to do, and then when people say, why can't we have more of these facilities? People will come in and say, well, actually. I need that much extra land. To do this, so it doesn't make sense for me to do it, so. Just be careful what we wish for on parking on that, so. I don't know how much more.
I, I hear you, I, I'm just speaking based on. My own personal experience.
This also means it's not, it's not, it's not saying that they can't put more, this is just saying the minimum, right, like. If you're running a business.
Yes.
You're gonna just want it to be convenient for your people, so you're probably gonna do a little more, so whatever that is, that's up to them.
Put in the word their minimum.
Well, that's what these all are. Like all ours parking is, I don't think, do we have any parking maximum? We do have that, good, okay, I'm glad we have a maximum.
We, we can, um, how about we, Brian, if you just highlight that one yellow and we'll do a little more, I'll, I'll. I'll have somebody dig around and just check if anybody else has a different standard, maybe we can. See if there's something, I, I don't think there's a ton of these facilities that are all over, but we'll, we can. Do a little more research on that.
There, there may not be a ton now, but as we know, we have an aging population, trust me, within ten years, there'll be a lot more.
Um, and then just on commercial rec. We could do something similar, I can, we can do a little more research, but I didn't know if anybody had any. Thoughts on that, the big concern again is, you, you know, when, sometimes when these come in, they get proposed as they're a volleyball court. So you can say, alright, so it's a volleyball court. You've got. X number of people on a court at one time and you got some people waiting. But then the volleyball court changes into something else and they repurpose the facility. And it's more intensive in terms of the parking load and it's, then you're underparked and it leads to overflowing problems in the street, so.
Don't we get, don't we get another bite at that? Uh, if the use changes?
No, well, the use is technically the same.
Yeah.
Volleyball versus hockey, or imagine it's a hockey rink to start, which is probably less intensive and then you go to. Volleyball, which probably has more people, that I think that's the situation we're dealing with, you're, you're worried about, Steve, right? Yeah, it's the same use, it's commercial, it's, it's recreation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I suppose if you permitted one. And then you had a special permit condition where it said any. Um, internal change of this. Type of. Activity would require them to come back to the commission, you, you just don't want to make it so burdensome that anytime any little thing happens, they've got to come back to you and then that's. Bogging you guys down and slowing down their business, so that, that, those are just kind of some of the things to think about.
I, I believe. What was that called, Sono? Something that.
Fieldhouse?
Fieldhouse, yeah, that, they had. When the original owners. I remember when they had tournaments. Occasionally. It was just crazy, right, people parked up on the grass. That there's like a berm in the front with tall, you know, like a hill of grass. And they were parked. All across the hill and then left it rutted, uh, I, I, you know, I remember that. And then I remember some just.
All along MLK Boulevard, there, it would just be lines of cars.
Yeah, it was crazy, but I remember there was a discussion. And I think it was a requirement that they create a parking plan for tournaments. And they use the parking of the, uh. Used to be a factory across the street and not, that's all changed now too, I don't know what that is, it might still be a factory, but there's some. You know, remember the, the, right across the street, there's a big facility.
Yeah, that was the, the, they made the Guame nine.
Yeah, yeah, so that. But we had made, we had put a condition, I'm pretty sure that we made a condition that when they have tournaments, they would have to present. To the city, uh, their agreement that they would use that, um. Off-street parking across the street, which made sense. You know, because that parking was mostly empty in the evening when most tournaments were. Uh, or on weekends, uh, you know, not during on a weekday when the, those, uh. When the factory had employees using their parking lot. Uh, so. I don't know if we just get around that by saying that. We would require. An agreement, uh, for tournaments or special events. You know, that way they're not overbuilding the parking, which we're trying to avoid.
Okay, um, let's move on.
By the way, I saw Bill Clinton at that Sono Fieldhouse. He came down for a rally, uh, with Obama's.
I remember when he was here and it was a mess trying to get down.
Oh, it was, I think I parked right in the middle of this, of MLK. Because I wanted to see Bill Clinton. It was the night before Obama got elected the second time, it was two thousand twelve. And anyway, I was like, Bill Clinton's at the Sono Fieldhouse. Not that that excites everybody, but I, I thought it was pretty exciting. Alright, I'll stop.
Steve, not just a question on driveway, locations, et cetera, is this. Are we in a business zone here or are we in residential that you're talking about, I can't see the header? Steve, you're muted or you're frozen?
Just frozen. Are you talking, I'm sorry, Timmy, were you talking about?
Yeah, driveway locations, is that residential or commercial?
The first one's specific to industrial zones, the other one is on. Let me see, I can, I have that. Document up, let me go to that page.
Thank you.
And I think that's applicable across the board, but let me see. It's number ten. Yeah, that is talking specifically about. The. Parking of. Tractor trailers. And so those wouldn't be permitted in a residential zone anyway, so that's just talking about, um, you know, it, it's where they're allowed to park.
Okay, but commercial type vehicles, then in other words.
Yeah, that's big, yeah, very, very large.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'd like to add a sentence at the tree requirement. Or at least discuss adding a sentence, it's see how the rest of the commission. Feels. Um, and staff, uh, curious. Uh, big problem we have with the tree requirement is that. Some of the property owners really hate the trees because they block the signs. Or they block the building. And they don't realize that if they let the tree grow, you could see under the trees. To the building just fine, but they keep lollipopping is the word I use. They, they chop these trees, they literally decapitate the trees. Uh, down to nothing and then we lose all of the effect of the trees. In terms of their remediation or mitigation of the, uh. Urban heat island effect. You know, which is, you know, when the parking lots get hit by the sun and they heat up and they're twenty degrees hotter than. Uh, you know, everything around, so, um, that's why we have the trees there besides the other benefits of the trees. So I really, and there's so many violations and it's really just so upsetting because we don't have staff to go around and. You know, create viol, create, uh. You know, issue violations. For the over pruning, but you know, the one that I'm thinking of is the Walgreens. On Main Avenue. Where Supercuts is, I don't know the name of that. That, uh, strip mall. It's on the corner of Broad Street and Main Avenue. That is, um. Those people really, they should be arrested for what they do to the trees in that, you know, on that property. They're like eight feet tall, you know, the city required them to put trees in. And they chop them down to nubbins. Every year and there, there's, there's absolutely no benefit of those trees. Whereas if you go, uh, if you go down the street. To, um, I think it's called Rainbow Plaza, heading down towards the one twenty-three, south on Main Avenue. They've got, the whole place is full of mature trees. It's beautiful and you look under the trees, you can see all the businesses, you can see all the signs. Um, it, it's really what, what we should be requiring, but there's nothing, it seems like there's nothing to stop. Owners from just chopping the trees down to nothing and, and you know, maybe it's just the maintenance people who are out of control. But, uh, it breaks my heart every time I go there, so I'd like to put a sentence in there after a tree requirement saying. Uh, trees shall be trimmed only for safety. Uh, issues, but, uh, allowed to be to, uh, achieve their mature, full mature height.
I agree with you.
Only, trees shall only be pruned. For safety. Purposes. But will, but shall, but must, or I don't want to have even say. May, but, but shall be allowed. To achieve their full mature size.
I, I think part of the issue with that too, not to belabor the point, but it's. Oftentimes the wrong species were selected for planting too, and then they, you know, they should have never been planted there in the first place. That's not always the case, but sometimes that is.
Sometimes that is, but I tell you, I, I, one of these days when I have nothing better to do. I'm gonna drive around and I'm gonna issue, uh. Prizes. For the property owners who are doing the right thing. And really try to shame. Like that Walgreens, whoever owns that property, it really, it's a sin. Because the trees are like these tiny little lollipops. You know, I mean, they're, they're like shrubs, they're not even trees, it's, it's ridiculous. And you know, the whole point of all of our effort in requiring landscaping. Is to mitigate the, the heat. Uh, on the asphalt, you know, and, and anyway.
Steve, I, I don't have any problem, uh, with, with, uh, this language. Uh, the only question I have is, does it belong here? Or is this something that the tree warden, uh, ought to be addressing?
No, I think you can include it in your regulation, I, I just don't know, we'll look to see exactly where it goes, maybe it's its own number, but yeah, I. I think you can put that in as a requirement, technically. Anybody's got a site plan approval with a landscape plan, that should be specified in that as well as part of that.
Okay.
And I'll just say, you know, sadly. The landscape architect who used to be on staff. Uh, passed, uh, you know, sort of on, on, on. Just. At a young age, it was just so sad, um. Uh, Frank Strauss, I believe it's Frank.
Scratch.
Yeah, str, str, stratch?
Scratch.
Yeah, that was him, so. And he would actually drive around and he would issue violations for people who were improperly pruning their trees, it was nice to know that that was happening. And he even required, I remember, um. The, uh, PC Richards had decapitated, they literally cut. The crab apples along Connecticut Avenue. Down to a five foot height, they chopped the top of the tree off and left a stump. And left a row of stumps along the street. And I literally had to pull over, I started crying, I was like. You know, and when I, I went in and I started screaming at the manager, I was like, what are you doing, he goes. Well, the guy from Long Island who owns PC Richards said they were blocking the view of his sign, and I'm like, well, we're not Long Island, okay? We're Connecticut and we are not gonna chop our trees down to trunk, anyway, I'm carrying on here, but. It really was a, it was a, uh, a conflict. I realized it was a cultural, um, thing where they thought it was totally appropriate to cut the tops of the trees off. Uh, down to stumps and, uh, and Frank required them to replace all the trees. Uh, and they hemmed and hauled and they complained to the mayor and everything else, but it was, uh, you know, this is what people do. And, you know, we're responsible for the built environment. And then these kind of things are real serious issues, they're not, it's not like, you know, I'm just being, uh. Uh, overly, uh. Persnickety here, uh, you know, if we're gonna require trees, they should be let to allow to grow to their full mature. Size and not be chopped down by ignorant, uh, property owners, I'll stop.
Alright, Steve, let's move on.
Amen, Mike.
Yeah, that's a good ad.
So the next flagged one is, um. On page two ninety-five.
I don't understand this one, I'm sorry.
Which one?
We're saying. Deleting the accept. Or there's two separate ones?
This is about the adjacent a budding thing and saying that the place where you can use the density bonus. Is only applicable to the multifamily development zones. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's just to ensure more or less that, um, if you allow, um. Any historic preservation. Bonuses of any kind, it would only occur. Historic preservation bonus of density, it would only occur in a zone that already allows it, so you're not saying in a single family zone, you can make it a. Four family or something by.
Right.
Preserving.
Yep. Steve, in that next section, I don't have my OED in front of me, but I don't think they'll pending is a word.
I was wondering who was gonna catch that. I'll blame Brian.
I, I don't have a problem with either of those.
So no fee in lieu? Is that all we're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have to do the public space?
Right.
Lovely, let's do it.
Okay.
Um, yeah, this, this one, the next on page. Three nineteen, I'm not quite sure why it's highlighted, but this was one recommendation that came out of the SLR report on. The sustainability section within the, the draft regulations, um, but it seemed like, reading it again, seems like a perfectly. Um, perfectly reasonable recommendation.
I agree.
Sorry, can you remind us what SLR is, please?
That's a consulting firm that, um, was working with the city and redevelopment agency on the climate action plan, they kind of at like a subtask of that. They were asked, asked to look at the, um. At the sustainability, um. Part of the zoning regulations and see what, um, you know, what could be enhanced.
So by removing tree stumps, that's enhancing the. Sustainability?
Sustainability?
Uh, no, it's, what is, dealing with um, if you have like uh. Erosion issues along an embankment, if you leave the stumps in and the root mass there, it makes the bank more stable. That's what they're.
You shouldn't remove it, in other words.
Correct.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
So this, I, this is a list of prohibited.
Addition. Right now, there's three things listed in that section. You're proposing to add a fourth?
But it doesn't say, it doesn't say that you shouldn't remove them. It says the removal of stump and root systems on all properties that border a ravine and tidal embankments. It sounds like you should remove it, not you shouldn't.
It's part of a larger clause. So it's saying these activities, it's a list, you have to, you really guys, I think we should split screen with the actual page. It says.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have my book with me.
Yeah, hold on, I can do that.
Not fully sure that I understand it, but it's, it's part of a more complicated clause.
Okay, sorry, I don't have the thing up on the others.
I, I also think there should be some language as to why it shouldn't be removed, like to the detriment of what?
So there's a list of four things. The first one is excavation or grading, blah, blah. Second one is soil disturbance, clear cutting, blah, blah. Then excavation grading, something else. And they're proposing there be a fourth thing saying the tree stump root thing.
Right.
Like the. You can do these things. As long as you have a permit. And it's part of a bigger clause saying these things are allowed without permit. These things are allowed with permit, and then these other things are by special permit. So this is C permitted by zoning or other permit. There we go.
Essentially, to do that, you need to actually come in and get a permit to do it.
Right.
So the recommendation of that report was you should add this fourth thing to the things that need to get a permit.
Right.
This is, this is the thing.
Thank you, Anna. Helpful.
No problem. I can explain things even if I don't understand them, because I see the structure.
It's a little bit redundant, because you probably need a weapons permit to do that activity anyway, but that's fine.
Okay, let's move, let's move forward.
And again, we can come back to any one of these if the, at, at any point in time um.
Is the fencing for solar for both rooftop and ground solar?
I think the bigger concern would be the, um, I think there's already a. An exemption for the rooftop screening, because obviously if you make the screening so high that it blocks the. Sun hitting the panel kind of defeats the purpose, I think that's already built in, I think this was for the freestanding.
Thank you.
And again, these are.
I think that's great. To define these things.
Yeah, there's the heat island I was just talking about.
That it, Steve?
That could be it for now. Yeah, we, there's gonna be some other things we add, there's a few um. We got some pretty lengthy um. Letters from different folks in the development community with um, issues they like address. So Brian and I have been working. Through those, uh, we probably have two or three more to get through. Um, and so we'll. Either if we don't get them done for your meeting. Hmm, in two weeks, we'll have them for the following one. I did want to, I see a couple of hands raised, but I did before we. Close for the night, I did wanna go over a rough schedule with you, but we can do that, you know, in a little bit too.
Go ahead, Nick.
I was just gonna ask, I know we, if we can add like residential parking requirements, maybe as like a standalone topic for a future session. I think it may be good to stare at those too. I know we look like we did a lot of the commercial tonight, but some of the residential stuff will be. I think worth discussing further.
Uh, is, is it really um, necessary to dedicate an entire meeting to that?
I don't know, entire meeting, it could be like a sub, I don't know if we have a couple of these in topics that we wanted to talk more about. We can just add it as like a sub, like one of.
Well, I think that makes, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, no, it's standalone, of course not.
I would agree, and I'd also like to add a subtopic about houses in the flood zone. I think it's an important issue for a lot of areas, a lot of neighborhoods. Residential, that is.
Okay. Uh, Steve, do you, uh, it'd be wonderful to end a few minutes early, uh, but do you want to uh? Um, give us a look at um, uh, what's ahead of us?
Sure, Darius did have his hand upside.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Sorry, Darius.
Yeah, I, I just um, ni- neighbor notification had popped up in my head as I was reading it. And I was thinking, uh, should we include tenants of the properties involved, not just owners? Because I do know um. Community meeting. Potential.
Uh, Darius.
And you know, there are some commercial tenants who act like.
Little, little difficult to hear you, Darius. But I know, uh, I know what you're uh, referring to. Uh, there is a whole issue about notification. I mean, ENNA has. Has made a uh, a, a big issue uh, for them. Uh, I, I, I think we ought to have a conversation about notification in general. You know, um.
Absolutely.
Are the current regulations regarding notification adequate? Do we feel they're adequate? Uh, and if not, how uh, how should we change them? Um, so yeah, that certainly ought to be uh, 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 one of those um. Uh, items that we, we bunch, bunch together for um, uh, uh, discussion.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me better?
Yes, now I can hear everything you're saying.
All right, I'll just continue these.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it would be great if there was a schedule for these. I mean, I'd be fine going to six to nine, but just to, to, to know this week, these are the three agenda areas. This week, there are the three, like before the meetings. Like before the individual meeting, like having a plan for all these different things and when they're gonna be talked about.
It was in what pages they're on in the book too, or in the document.
So this was, yeah, that's what I wanted to chat quickly about. Um, we made pretty good progress. You guys can see the screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, we made pretty good progress on the edits tonight, so we can um. You know, maybe make, wrap that piece up of the ones that we're aware of that are outstanding at your next meeting. Um, the other one, and I don't know if we can get to it in two weeks, maybe we can as well, we can always bump this up and adjust it. These, this is kind of like a list of just. And I added the, the couple ones we just talked about, but um, we talked about. Adding in uh, an additional single family zone, so we're gonna have to kind of. Put that back into the map, um, back out for your discussion um, as well. Which I, I think should be pretty straightforward exercise, because it should line up like the existing. Be residence zone should line up. Pretty consistently with the change that we're going to make. Um, adding that zone back in, so that should clean up a lot of that. Um, and then the other part related to that is some of the nomenclature. Should we make it a little more similar to what we're doing today? Um, so we could probably get that done by early October, I would think. And then um. Yeah, Tammy, I had already flagged the flood one. I, I think at the second October meeting, we should have a. Go through the sustainability section. I have some recommendations and changes we're just starting to work on now. It's gonna take a couple of weeks to. Flush them out a little bit, but that might be um, a pretty lengthy discussion on how we apply that, so we could probably do that in the flood. At, at one time. Um, and then I think these other items that are kind of listed below the uh. There, there's the question of that whole section about the development parcels and do we actually need that in the regulations? I'm starting to think that we don't, based on the. Work on the complete streets plan, so we might be able to eliminate that whole section of the regulations. Um, the resi- and I added Nick's uh, about the residential parking and the neighbor notification. There are a couple just quickly on that. We did beef up a few things related to that. We have. For certain types of applications, we are requiring the posting of signs. We've increased the notification distance. On applications. Um, I don't know about tenants, how we handle that, because I don't know. Because typically the, what you're required to do is go to the tax assessor's office and get. The ownership information. And if the tenants of an individual building aren't listed there, they may be. I'll, I'll, I'll follow up on that to see what we can do and what's legally um, allowed to be done.
Maybe the town clerk might have something, I don't know.
I wanna be surprised if you can't know the tenants, but maybe you post something at the building or.
Yeah, we can look at that. I, I don't know what's available.
Right, is it such a thing as collaborating with the post office? So this way, they, they know. Who's there?
DMV.
The, the only tricky thing with that is um. There are legal addresses which they're required to comply with, and then there's postal addresses. So there's. There are a lot more postal addresses than there are legal addresses.
Oh, okay.
Steve, uh, I didn't see on the list of the issue of affordable housing, which several members of the commission are concerned with.
Gotcha.
You know, um. Uh, okay. Anything else?
Not for me, sir.
Good. Anything from anybody else?
Uh, yes. Mike here.
Go ahead and then Darius.
Um, I wanna make sure we have uh, to repeat uh, Hannah's request. From the last meeting, uh, if that's okay that I bring that up, Anna, uh, the enforcement uh, discussion.
Oh, yeah.
In one of our meetings uh, as well, like, like, just how we can improve that. Because I think it's generally. Um. It, it's, I think it's generally known that the enforcement uh. Mechanisms uh, need uh, strengthening in, in Norwalk somehow. Um. And uh. Especially when, we know with increased uh, density uh, in some of the neighborhoods, so. Uh, that and also, uh, I'd like to read a quick comment, um. Uh, hold on one second, uh. It's, I lost it here, hold on, just take me a second. Um.
Could I address just that quick thing, Mike?
Go ahead, sure, yeah, go ahead.
I think for the enforcement thing, we may do it separate from this process, just because it involves. Um. Three or four other departments as well, not just zoning. Fire, fire marshal, building blight, um, potentially DPW, so we may do it outside of this arena, but.
That's fine, I don't, I don't mind having another meeting for something so important. Uh, I think that's, that's okay.
Well, also to clarify what I was bringing up about enforcement was about um. Uh, getting information to the public about how it works, which is something that, that uh, Steve and his team, like that's a. A clarification and education sort of project, um. Separate from, do we need to make changes to how it works within the context of the zoning rewrite, which is not. Anything that I've raised, I, I, I just wanna work on the education right now and making sure everybody understands how it works.
And, and I, and yes, and I would agree, and uh, any failings. Uh, of uh, state law, because you know, sometimes the staff's hands are tied by the state. Is there anything we need to work on? I just wanted to refer people to. Uh, something that happened uh, about twelve years ago. Or it was eleven years ago. When we did change a state law, uh, Bob Duff helped us uh, in, in Golden Hill. And um. To help with enforcement, uh, and it was, had to deal with treble damages. Um, and I won't get into that now, but it's something that, you know, if necessary. We can use our representatives to uh, help staff. In um, having more teeth and, and the ability to uh. Uh, to enforce violations. So um, or correction of violations. Um, and then, so uh, and then I just wanna bring up, uh, wanna just make a statement uh, for into the record. Uh, Lou uh, divulged. Which was fine with me at the last meeting that I was not seeking reappointment. Uh, and uh, uh, for my next term, it's up, I guess at the end of the year. Um, it's coming up soon, I think it's probably be the end of December. And, and I didn't mind that, because it, it got the word out that, you know, I was not gonna be a vice chair. Any longer, but I did wanna have a, I did actually wanna make the announcement, or at least have a, it's just a short sentence, but a kind of, put it in context. Um, so, uh, after proudly serving our community for fifteen years. As a volunteer on various land use commissions and task forces since two thousand eight. I decided it's a good time to take a break and devote more time to my family and my growing business. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside so many other dedicated volunteers over the years, including this current panel. Um. Uh, who give up their time and energy to make Norwalk a better place to live, work, and play. That's all, thank you. I'm gonna miss everybody, but I would not go anywhere for a while, but.
Darius and then JJ.
I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Go ahead, Darius.
Yes, I'm, oh, I was just going.
Oh, I saw your hand up, sorry.
Yeah, it, it was, it was up and then several minutes have passed along with the thought that I had.
JJ?
So um, I'm proposing at our next public hearing that we have in person. That we also invite. Um, you know, the, of, the enforcement measures, so you know. A representative from the police office, from, from the police department, representative from parking. A representative, you know, from, from um, East Norwalk in regards to, you know, their, their state rep. So this way we have a full table of stakeholders who can. You know, share the burden of us, you know. You know, listening and making a decision based upon, you know, scenarios. You know, that, that um, residents may have. And, and they, they can address it in real time, you know, the police officers or. You know, I mean, of, um, the, the various leaders of those particular departments slash divisions.
You, you're suggesting like a town hall, basically.
Well, yeah, I'd say the next meeting that we have in person, you know, when, you know, the public will be there and they will be. You know, bringing up all these valid issues, you know, um, and concerns. And this way, the, we're, we're listening, but we actually have someone there to answer it.
JJ, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, but we have a very full plate. Um, and um. I, I, I don't think we're gonna be able to get to that until after. We have put um, these new regulations to bed. So probably sometime, sometime in November.
Yeah, so such a point you were saying that.
I think we can, we can put that on the agenda.
Yes, and, and, and maybe that's the only thing on the agenda, so this way if it runs overtime, we don't have to push something else to the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm, I just wanna clarify, you said the next time we're at a public hearing in person, if we're having a public hearing, it's about a thing. Right, where we listen. And people, there's not like the interactive responses, I think that's why Darius was talking about um, a, what'd you call it?
A town hall, okay.
A town hall, so like, the thing that, the thing that um. I've been talking with Steve about is about. Informationally, getting the information about how it currently works out to the public. Possibly in a way that allows back and forth, um, but really about making sure that people understand and presenting how everything works. And I think if you're talking about having a session for people to bring their issues. To more than just this board, but to like everybody that's involved. Like, I don't know if those should be part of the same thing or separate, but like. I don't think we should combine it with a public hearing related to the zoning rewrite or related to this or that, and then things get messy.
Yeah, okay, so I'll pull back on that specific, but where you're going in regards to. The public being heard and the public being answered. We should have some sort of form, some sort of format like that forum. So this way they can get some answers in real time, because with us just sitting there listening, which is our role. And then making a decision without feedback to them, they feel that. And then making a decision without feedback to them, they feel that we are not listening, they are not heard.
Thanks, JJ, Steve, you wanted to say something?
No, no, I, I, no, after, no, that's okay.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a uh. Darius, are you making?
Make that motion.
Okay, is there a sec, is there a second?
One second.
Hey, I, we've got a number of seconds, uh, Anna, Tammy. Uh, and I just wanna point out that it's seven fifty-four, and with that, all those in favor, just raise your hands. Thanks very much, see you all next week.
Thank you, good night.